Carolyn Rice, School Board Chair. And this administrative, informal, and workshop session of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at four o'clock PM on this 23rd day of August 2022. As we welcome both our public and attendance. Did I mention the wrong date? I did. Thirteenth, wrong digit, thank you. On this 13th day of August 2022.
September.
January. That's what happens when you're gone half the summer, my whole timeline, okay. Members of the public will be able, as always, to observe this meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VVTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. And as always, we welcome those public, members of the public here in person today. It's our protocol to break at 5:30 and no later than 5:45 to prepare for the formal meeting, which will take place six o'clock in chambers. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Chair Rice. Present in the Einstein lab is Chairwoman Rice, Vice Chair Melvin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Felton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Hughes, and Ms. Wicks.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Mrs. Weems is on her way, will be here very shortly. And Mrs. Manning notified me of another event she is attending. I do want to share with the School Board that we have outside council who's available to us today, beginning at 4:45, to meet on the closed session that you were all apprised of. And so we will have a hard stop here today at five o'clock, as far as this part of the workshop, if not sooner. So any other admin matters before we proceed right into our first presentation. All right then, I'll go ahead and introduce. Dr. Rogers is getting up, and Dr. Kelly. And we, this is about the, a recap of our robust summer learning, and also the all-important school opening review.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Chairwoman Rice, Vice Chair Melvin, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. This afternoon, we will provide you with an overview of our fantastic summer learning opportunities that we just completed not long ago. And Dr. Kelly is going to lead us in that conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Again, good afternoon, Chairwoman Rice, Vice Chair Melvin, School Board, and Dr. Spence. I'm going to go ahead and dive right in and start with our elementary experiences. As you know, we had three opportunities at the elementary level. We had a summer learning boost, which were online lessons that were released during the summer, during the month of July. We also had summer learning camps that were implemented at select sites, including all of our Title I schools and 24 additional elementary schools. And students, and schools who did not implement a summer learning camp were provided with funds to support summer learning programs and activities that were specific to their student populations. So I'm going to give you a little more detail about each one. Like last year, all of our students had access to summer learning boost site. It went live July 1, and each week, new lessons were released so that students could complete these lessons, and they could get reinforcement on skills and concepts that were covered during their school year to help better prepare them for the beginning of this school year. The chart above illustrates student class link analytics for the summer boost site. This data was shared to us by the Department of Technology, and it notates the total number of launches, as well as monthly and daily launches. There was a decrease from the use of our summer learning boosts from last year. For our summer learning camp, I will start with attendance data. Teachers reported attendance daily, and they reported their attendance through a Google form. This slide demonstrates the attendance at kindergarten through fifth grade. It includes the total number of students at the bottom, and the percentages at the top of each bar graph show the percentage of students who attended 12 or more of the 15 instructional days for the camp. In comparing summer learning camp data from last year, the attendance declined by an average of 7%. Language arts and math objectives for summer learning camp were determined for each grade level by the Elementary Department of Teaching and Learning team. The focus objectives were determined based on data trends from our previous school year, as well as considering the most vital foundational skills for the next school year. Language arts and math data were collected in a Google form completed by teachers, where teachers reported whether or not students demonstrated growth in the objectives covered. This was based on anecdotal data that was collected through the small group instruction throughout the camp. I'll start with literacy data. Teachers submitted the reports for all of the students who attended camp. In kindergarten through second grade, teachers reported students' progress on their understanding of phonetic principles and phonological and phonemic awareness. These objectives are their literacy small group objectives that teachers report on each grading period. These particular objectives were chosen to build student word recognition skills and to support fluent reading. Teachers in third through fifth grade collected data on students responding, reading, and demonstrating fiction and nonfiction texts, and their word analysis skills. These objectives were chosen to strengthen their language comprehension skills and overall reading comprehension. For math data, kindergarten through second grade teachers recorded progress on number-sensitive computation, as these are the foundational strands of math. But specific grade level objectives were selected for each strand based on the division data. In third through fifth grades, these grades, teachers also selected objectives in number-sensitive computation with specific objectives based on the grade level objective. I'll give you a moment to look at the scores on the screen. As you can see, our students did a lot of learning and growing over the summer. We also collected data from family members during summer learning camp. You can see here that parents provided feedback on the daily schedule and the lesson experiences that students had. This is great feedback, and I'll give you a moment to look at the screen. In addition to collecting feedback from parents, we also collected feedback from teachers. So I'll give you a moment to check out this feedback, because it's awesome to see the amazing experiences that the teachers had, not just the students. As part of the feedback that we collected from teachers, we also asked them to be very specific about whether or not they felt that these opportunities that we provided helped students maintain or strengthen key literacy skills for the upcoming school year. We used a rating scale with one indicating strongly disagree, ranging up to five, which indicated strongly agree. 90% of the teachers agreed or strongly agreed that their students maintained or strengthened their literacy skills by participation in the program. We asked the same question with math. We used the same scale, and as you can see, 89% of teachers agreed or strongly agreed that their students maintained or strengthened their key math skills by participating in this opportunity. For 13 schools that did not implement a summer learning program, they received Summer Learning Leap tutoring funds, and we're excited to say that over 300 students participated in those activities. I will now transition to Extended School Year, or ESY services. The majority of our students with disabilities received most of their special education services in the general education setting. Therefore, many students with disabilities participated in the general education summer programs offered by the school division. Some students received Extended School Year services. Consideration for those services is part of the IEP process. These services are the individualized extensions of specific special education and related services that are provided beyond the typical school year. ESY services are delivered through a variety of settings and methods. It is a continuum of services. The IEP team determines the setting and the method based on the needs of the students. Some students with disabilities receive classroom-based ESY services at school cluster sites. For the summer of 2022, there were eight elementary cluster sites and one high school cluster site that served both middle and high school students. Students served through C-SEB for ESY were served at one elementary site, as well as Renaissance Academy. We will now transition to secondary learning opportunities. Secondary summer school learning opportunities included middle school students who needed to repeat a course for promotion. They reported to Lanstown Middle School or Plaza. And high school students who also needed a repeat course, who reported to Lanstown or Bayside High School, based on their cluster. Students who decided to take a course for the first time utilized the Virginia Beach Digital Campus. Now we're going to move over to academic performance for secondary. This chart notes student performance for the repeat face-to-face courses offered for the 2022 Secondary Summer School Program. It represents both middle and high school. The chart indicates the overall enrollment for middle and high and individual course pass percentages. So you can see by looking at the graph that there were 468 students enrolled in middle school, repeat face-to-face summer school courses, and a pass rate of 97%. And for high school, there were 912 students enrolled with a pass rate of 92%. So I'll give you a moment to look at the individual courses. This slide represents information related to students who took the, who took courses for a first time through the Virginia Beach Digital Campus. Students who participated in these courses were either trying to get ahead to create an opportunity in their schedule for another course, to stay on track, or to stay on track for on-time graduation. There were a total of 2,168 students who registered, and from that number, 2,058, or 95%, had a passing grade. So I'll give you a moment to look at those overall pass percentages broken down by content.
Dr. Kelly, for the benefit of any public who may not have heard this term before, can you just redefine for everyone what Virginia Beach Digital Campus is?
Virginia Beach Digital Campus is an opportunity for our students to take their courses digitally. It's an online campus, so they register for the course and they take it throughout, it was August, I mean, July, where's Sharon? July 15 through August 20-something. But it's an online digital course that they take, and then it meets a requirement for having taken the entire course.
And these are Virginia Beach teachers? Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
And like elementary school, secondary also has a summer learning boost site. And they're, this provides an opportunity for students to build their skills in math and science courses. Students took advantage of this over the summer, with 607 middle and high school students who participated in the math booth, boost opportunities, and 145 middle and high school students who participated in the science boost opportunities. For the first time since the onset of COVID, we were able to transition to having a centralized summer graduation for our students and families. And this summer, 127 students completed graduation requirements over the summer. So we want to sincerely thank our students for being resilient, and our parents and teachers, we want to thank them for their efforts. We are very excited that we were able to provide 8,908 students with some type of summer learning opportunity. Thank you, and we will transition to our school opening, and Mr. Delaney will come.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. I hope you've taken a moment to kind of let that number sink in. 8,908 students taking advantage of our summer opportunities is really, as a high school person, I conceptualize that as almost four entire high schools being involved in summer learning opportunities. And when you carry that on with teachers that were involved, school counselors involved, building administrators, bus drivers, food services, it's really a massive endeavor that I think we should all be very proud of.
Mr. Delaney, can I ask a question?
I hope I have the answer for it, yes, ma'am.
What, what is the typical cost to the families for participating?
Yes, I'm going to have to look at that, I'll be incorrect if I give you a number there.
Okay.
The boost programs, the math boost program that you saw of 600 students, that's a free program that students could access, but I'll have to get back to you on the example.
Okay.
I think it's always important when we get together with board members in the community that we remind you of the Strategic Action Agenda, which really guides our work for the upcoming year. Really like to draw your attention to the top of the agenda, which is focused on supporting staff and celebrating success. The preliminary agenda looks very promising in many areas, and you will hear more about that this evening during the Standards of Learning Student Performance presentation. Much of our in-service week with staff was focused on celebrating our accomplishments from the past year while planning around the three foundational principles of advancing educational equity, excuse me, using integrated systems of support, and creating future-ready students. All schools have submitted their plans for continuous improvement, which included goals aligned to the Strategic Action Agenda and our strategic plan compass to 2025. Schools are really focused on closing our achievement gaps, emphasizing the foundational skills of literacy and numeracy, while engaging professional learning that positively impacts student outcomes. Last Tuesday, we welcomed students for the 2223 school year. If you were able to do that, I hope you found the excitement that we all did. It's the first time in two years we've had an opening such as that. The excitement from teachers and students was really obvious, and it was really an exciting week last week. Teachers and students have been focused on establishing routines, forming relationships with their peers and their teachers, and diving into instruction. Schools continue to focus and emphasize the importance of maintaining safe and secure learning environments. Mr. Freeman will provide a more detailed update necessary in a few moments. Based on the feedback from principals and visits to schools, students are adjusting to the new cell phone regulation on the secondary level. Many teachers and administrators have really expressed their appreciation for this move to minimizing student distraction. I'd also really like to take a moment to provide a moment of praise for our high school master schedulers and school counselors. As you know, we had a school, new high school model this year. Very few issues with student schedules as we moved to the high school model this year. That did not occur without significant hard work, seven days a week, multiple hours, as they looked at master schedules, were looking to take the time to resolve conflicts and balance teacher schedules. Working with principals, teachers, and school councils, we'll continue to explore opportunities to improve our high school scheduling model. Although it is early, and we still have much work to do, it's been an amazing start to the school year. And I think, as I turn the presentation over to Ms. Woodhouse, who's spoken many times about our staffing challenges, I think she's about to share some additional exciting news as well. Ms. Woodhouse?
Good afternoon. I'll try to keep my enthusiasm down. It's been a little difficult, so. As Dr. Spence attended and spoke with the HR department, we were very excited about the teamwork and the effort that went into recruiting and hiring to fill our vacancies. And definitely, it's a team effort. So on Tuesday, September 6, we opened schools with 35 full-time instructional vacancies, which is 90 positions less than last year. And so as, as you can see in the chart, we had approximately 10 at the elementary level, 19 at the middle school level, and 6 at the high school level. And I love saying this, we're continuing to staff, and we actually filled several positions this morning, so I'm still excited.
Yeah.
Our primary vacancies included elementary classroom teachers, math and special education teachers, career and technical education, world languages, and music, which for the first time has really been a struggle for us this year. So building administrators, they worked closely with Department of Human Resources to ensure a qualified substitute was hired to fill all remaining vacancies. And we were able to open with 99.33% in comparison to last year, which was 97.6% with approximately 25. Our model is clear that recruitment and retention is everyone's responsibility. And again, this work could not have been accomplished at all without each of the hiring managers and every representative from each department, so we thank you. In terms of our non-instructional vacancies, so we opened school with approximately 51 non-instructional school-based vacancies in comparison to 145 openings last year, not including our custodial and food service staff. And I will say, as of this morning, when I checked the numbers, we were down to 36. So we continue to staff these positions as well.
I'm sorry?
At that time, we had 30 elementary teacher assistant positions open, and that includes our kindergarten assistants, pre-K, our PE, special education, and general assistants. Across all levels, we did have security assistant positions, a few office associates, technology support technicians in school, suspension coordinators, and one school nurse, and that position was filled. So I know Mary Shaw is greatly appreciative of the fact that we filled every nursing position.
Heidi's probably, Heidi's probably pretty happy too.
Heidi, you know, I laugh. Mary Shaw and I live in the same neighborhood, and we did not know until she retired. I see her walking now, so Heidi's, I swallow. I swear I know that name. Thank you, Heidi. And so with that, we have had some challenges. And I wanted to bring to your attention that our ability to staff our custodial and food service positions continue to be a challenge. At this time, in working with both offices, they have been managing and making it work with other initiatives that we have in place. But HR is definitely shifting our focus and making this our number-one top priority. So currently, the Department of Human Resources is planning an in-person hiring fair targeting our custodial and food services departments. And also, plans for a recruitment and retention incentive is forthcoming with notification from Dr. Spence. So we will definitely keep the board abreast of any changes that we see taking place. But again, some challenges continue to be within our custodial and food services departments. Tuition-free program, and as you recall, as a recruitment and retention initiative, the School Board approved waiving student tuition for Virginia Beach City Public School staff who do not reside in Virginia Beach. As shown in the chart on the screen, we are definitely seeing a positive increase in the number of employees participating, which did assist us with staffing some of our positions. The plan for the tuition-free program is to continue next year as a recruitment and retention initiative for all positions, division-wide, and to more broadly market for the upcoming school year. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Freeman to continue sharing exciting news.
Could, can I, can I just ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Hold on. I wrote it down, I didn't realize you were going to be leaving us up here. But, well, I'd like to know, do we still have some teachers who, on secondary level, who might have more than 150 students? And if so, is the tuitions, or is the stipend still available for those teachers who happen to have more than 150 students on secondary level?
Okay, so normally, that question I know is addressed by the Department of School Leadership.
I'm sorry.
So, oh, not a problem, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Delaney to let him address that question.
Ms. Anderson, we run those numbers after the September 30 count of enrollment.
Right.
If we have teachers over 150, they still receive a stipend based on the number of students that are over 150. We also are looking at teachers that have a certain number that are only teaching four-by-four courses, that might take them over a number as well and would provide that stipend. And we also have to look at the teachers that might be teaching a combination of both. So that's a long answer, but yes, we're going to look at providing those stipends.
So if you find that that's true, as of September 30, do you back pay for the, during the time that they had?
They get paid at the time that they have those students at 150. We do it in different increments throughout the year as we run enrollment numbers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
And if I may add, also, we continue in HR to work closely with Dossel for any teacher at any grade level that have exceeded their numbers. Just in working with elementary this morning, we're looking at eight additional positions to bring some relief to our classroom teachers. So that's monitored on an ongoing basis. So we will add those eight positions and advertise for those as soon as we get the final paperwork from our Department of School Leadership.
I appreciate that, and I'm glad you brought that forward, because a lot of people don't realize that. I mean, I knew that as a former teacher, that the September 30, you know, are, that was kind of what we all look for, you know? But at the same time, it's good for the public to know and for other teachers who are out there who may not realize that September 30 enrollment period is really, really important, that's what we go by.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Can I, we, if I may, we really need Mr. Freeman to continue so that we can keep on track.
Oh, okay.
And I will keep this brief, so that we can get to all those questions. We're off to a good start, we're just going to give you a couple of updates to keep this one brief. And then for the next School Board meeting on the 27th, you'll get a more detailed Division Services update at that point. So in transportation, safety continues to be our top priority, and we're focused on getting back to a 95% on-time rate for our buses. We're not there yet, but making good progress. The registration process for regular education buses that began last May was successful in minimizing disruption during the first week of school. That being said, we are experiencing pockets where significant numbers of students whose parents did not register for transportation, and we're working with schools to receive those requests from parents and assign those students to buses. But it is better this year than in previous years. We're expecting our student ridership to increase this year. Initial indications match with that expectation. So during the 1920 school year, which was pre-pandemic, we had an actual ridership of just over 46,000 students. This was the number of students that we measured who actually rode the bus that year. So last year, during the pandemic, 38,700 students rode the bus, again, actual students who rode the bus. And we won't have true ridership data for this year until the end of the month. However, based upon historical data, we expect actual ridership to be several thousand fewer than the roughly 45,000 who have registered for transportation. We'll give you more updates on that later. The other factor that has us off to a good start is the increased number of bus drivers that we've retained and hired. Our numbers continue to improve week over week, and currently, we have 482 bus drivers transporting students. In addition, we have 38 in training. 20 of those are in the final stages of training, and we expect that number of 482 to increase before we see you on September 27. We also have 30 prospective drivers who are scheduled to begin training next Monday. But as a reminder, that's the number we expected to receive in training. We frequently see fewer than that actually show up. But that all continues to be good progress for continuing to improve our bus driver status. In security and emergency management, we continue to focus on safety procedures. Mr. DiMartini and his coordinators have been visiting several schools per day to provide support and reinforce expectations for exterior and classroom doors, as well as check-in procedures. As a reminder, we've implemented the Armed School Security Officer Program, and we're still in the initial stages of filling positions. We've been able to provide coverage at nine of 11 schools, high schools, and five of 15 middle schools. This is in addition to our assigned school resource officers, those are our uniformed police officers, who have returned to full coverage at all of our secondary schools. And today, we continue to work, just like Ms. Woodhouse shared earlier, we continue to work on hiring, and we have a couple of good prospects in the pipeline for school security officers. We also completed the first of a multi-year phased-in plan to add a second security assistant at all of our elementary schools. So we've got 10 of our elementary schools now that have two security assistants assigned. And in future years, we will implement more of those until we have all of our elementary schools with two security assistants. Again, this was intended to be a brief update on some areas of focus within Division Services, at least on part of the brief. But the next meeting, we'll give you a more detailed update as part of a dedicated School Division Services update. This concludes the brief, and it was obviously a joint effort across many departments, and we're happy to take here more questions on any of the topics.
So we'll allow that, I've managed to questions. Uh, Mrs. Franklin?
Oh, a question for, for you?
Anybody.
Anybody, huh?
Well, I was just curious, to Ms. Woodhouse. I know that you've been hustling to get all these vacancies filled, so great job to you and your team. Was there anything that was very helpful, or you found, what, you know, was the most effective in terms of filling some of those positions?
So we found, in analyzing our recruitment data, that advertisement at the graduations was very successful. We saw a large increase in, in applications, because, one, we were able to not only spread the word that we are hiring, and more than just teachers. I think people think many times that a school division only staffed teaching positions, but also having representation from all the various departments present allowed questions to be addressed. And then the little flyer with the QR code was really assisting, insisting us in hiring and staffing. Obviously, the free press this summer, and working with media and communications, we had quite a few interviews scheduled and unscheduled. But every opportunity that we were able to get on the TV screens, whether it be through social media outlets or not, it really helped. We saw large increases of applications after each of those events. And so we plan to obviously continue with that and then analyze our data on other recruitment opportunities that we have to share.
We'll just add to that, too. We do appreciate the School Board's continued support to keep us competitive in the market with the salary increase of 6%, and the benefits increase was very helpful, as we heard from a number of folks who were applying. So we really do appreciate that as well.
So we have Mrs. Melanick, then Mrs. Hughes, Ms. Owens, and then we will- So we have Mrs. Melanick, then Mrs. Hughes, Ms. Owens, and then we will um ask that any additional questions after that be emailed, so.
How long is bus driver training? How long does it take?
So it it varies. Mr. Lash, roughly, what's an average time for bus driver training?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Yes.
I want to do that so.
Yeah, and a reminder there that we're now paying for folks who are in that training, so that's a change. And that has been very helpful in terms of getting people to come into that training.
We are now paying.
We are now paying for folks who are in that training.
Good reminders, thank you. And Mrs. Hughes?
Um yeah, I just, it says on here nine of uh the security officers, nine of eleven high schools, five of fifteen middle schools. But then I thought you said right after that we have full coverage. Did I mishear you?
No, you didn't.
Okay.
The full coverage was for SROs. So our school resource officers who are the uniformed police officers, they are now back uh and fully covering our schools. The SSOs who, those are the additional armed security officers who um much like the picture shares, they're much like a security assistant, but they're trained and qualified to carry weapons in schools.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Yes ma'am.
And Ms. Owens?
Yes, I am uh excited to see our uh vacancy numbers low and uh going down. I am curious, I know that our new four-by-four schedule, um part of that was to be able to rearrange courses so that maybe we're able to utilize our teachers to, I don't know, the greatest extent. Um how does our current uh number of teachers this year compare to years past? Are we, do we have less vacancies because we have more teachers? Or do we have less vacancies because we've rearranged our schedules in a way that teachers are taking on more students?
I can speak to the number piece and then turn it over to Mr. Delaney because we have not analyzed as HR department to that degree. We staff approximately fifty-two hundred teacher positions. What we were able to do this year that I believe was a true benefit was look early on in where we could either hold off on a position um and really staff what was most urgent. So we ran the numbers a couple of days ago in HR and we still have over fifty-one hundred teachers. So there's not a large discrepancy and we know we will be working with the Department of uh School Leadership in putting out more positions. Also, I I do believe DL was a huge benefit this year, uh distance learning. My apologies with the aphrodisiacs. Distance learning, I think, was a benefit. But I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Delaney and let him speak a little bit, learn breakfast to that as well.
Similar to Ms. Woodhouse, we have not done a deep analysis on how the high school schedules affected teacher allocations or teacher need. Because we have so many teachers teaching on a different schedule, it's not a strict four-by-four and I have to remind people of that often. It has allowed kids to have more opportunities to take classes and teachers, more teachers will be teaching six over the year. But we're still, Ms. Owens, looking into that to see really was there a significant impact there because we're not confident of expressing it one way or the other yet.
Fair enough, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, then we're gonna, we're gonna wrap this up for now and follow up with uh any additional questions via email. I can share as chair, just when I read the Sunday pilot and saw the statistic, to know that we're the largest division in the region and yet the least number of vacancies just speaks to the Herculean efforts of your department, so thank you.
So may I, may I just request that if anybody has any further questions about this, that they email the entire board so that we all know that the question's been asked and then we get the response back.
Absolutely.
So if you, if you email me, uh we'll make sure the response is copied to the board.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, welcome, Miss Kate. We now are at the point of our cares update and fund usage.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ryan, I'd like to share with my own ex global members, Dr. Spence. For this presentation, I will be providing an update on the various federal pandemic relief funding Virginia Beach City Public Schools has received to date. Initially, I'll cover our three main grant awards. We received commonly referred to as ESR one, two, and three. And then I will turn to some additional federal awards. We receive some which are expired and some of which in most cases are smaller and are more um specific federal funding out of the umbrellas of the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARP. The Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security, also known as the CARES Act, and the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations, also known as the CERESA Act. This slide reflects an overview of the three main sources of federal funding we received that I previously referred to as ESR grants. As you can see, they each fall under a different federal grant I just mentioned. As shared with you in previous presentations, this federal funding was received due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic and as such must be used for the prevention of, reduction of, or response to COVID-nineteen. Prior to these awards, we also received the Coronavirus Relief Fund, the Post-Secondary Special Education Support Grant, and the Early Childhood Special Education Teacher Incentive Grant, all of which have expired. And again, I'll provide additional detail on these expenditures of those expired grants later in the presentation. You've seen this slide in previous presentations. It just indicates the factors the school division must consider regarding the allowability of expenditures being charged to any of these federal grants. So our main question is the use of funds is intended to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, including impacts on the social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs of our students. You can see the other areas to consider with the point being that we have some limitations on the allowable use of these funds. So this slide shows those three main ESR grants, award amounts, and the expiration dates. ESR one will be ending soon on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. ESR two will be ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and ESR three will be ending on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. The remaining slides I have will provide a general overall listing of how the funds have been used and will continue to be used until they expire, barring any future amendments. In some instances, you will see throughout the presentation continuation of activities in the various categories that have expanded across at times all three grant awards. This slide represents the status of CARES ESR one. The award amount was a little over ten million dollars. As you can see, the grant expires nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-two, and that means those funds have to be encumbered by this date. We have until November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two to file for reimbursement of these funds. The grant's remaining balance is approximately nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars, which seems like a large amount, but in the context of the size of the award, the grant is ninety percent expended and there is a plan in place to transfer a qualifying expenditure for laptops for teachers and instructional staff from ESR three to close out this grant by the nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-two deadline. The next few few sh- slides show the types of expenditures by category that were charged to this grant. I'm not going to read in each of these to you because some of them can be expensive. But you'll see under personnel and benefits, you'll see the stipends. There were stipends for extended learning program staff. There were some non-instructional personal wages for custodians and nurses and the health assessment team. Under contracted services, you can see there's roof repair at base at elementary, some casework at those listed schools. There was a subscription to Ring Call Center and some installation of interactive panels and some other technology. Materials and supplies, again, you'll see PPE, some sanitation projects, technology, instructional materials. You'll see some refrigeration units and coolers to start supporting our grab-and-go meals and that we've all been briefed on. Under internal services, other charges and capital outlay, we have indirect costs. We have seven schools that were received replacement washer and dryers and that's for the extra cleaning that had to be done of of uh rags and those types of things. And then the HVC upgrade and maintenance for those three schools that you see listed on the screen. This next slide represents the status of ARP, ESR two. Um the grant award amount award was a little over thirty-seven, almost thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven million dollars. The grant expires nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-three. And again, that's the date we need to encumber those funds by and we have until November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three to reimburse. The grant is about ninety-five percent expended or encumbered. The funds available at this point are approximately one-point-five million. But you can see we have about a year to spend and however, the plan is to fully expend this grant this fiscal year. Again, expenditures by category, um personnel and benefits, you have Virtual Virginia. You see some of the stipends, the retention incentive, the contact tracer pay, stipends for bus driver recruiters. Under contracted services, we have Zoom video, letters training, there was Google Workspace, there was IXL. We have contracted services from CHKD to expand education around mental health needs. Um so I'll let you see those. And then Virtual Virginia fees. Materials and supplies, we have upgraded devices for teachers in classrooms. You see the PPE and the sanitizing projects in the cafeteria tables to accommodate social distancing. Internal services, other charges and the capital outlay, you have costs related to summer feeding, again, indirect costs, and seven additional schools receiving uh commercial washer and dryers. This slide represents the status of ARP ESR three. This is one of our larger grant awards. It was a little over eighty-two-point-five million dollars. Um and again, it has expires on nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four. That's the encumbrance date, reimbursement by the following November fifteenth date. The grant is only about twenty-four percent expended or encumbered. Um the funds available at this point are approximately sixty-three million dollars. We do have two years to spend on this grant. This grant does have a requirement to spend at a minimum twenty percent of the award on learning loss to continue to address the academic impact of loss instructional time. And this is through the implementation of evidence-based interventions such as tutoring, summer school, and various instructional software. Running through these categories for this grant, again, you will see some of the continuing activities of stipends and retention. We had teacher support reti- retainment liaisons. We uh the fourth and fifth bullets, you're there for the increased start and pay for bus drivers and then remove the two-hundred-and-fifty. Those are related to what you were briefed on for the Chesterfield model in order to get our bus drivers up to speed and ready for open for school. Those two items will need to be built into our twenty-twenty-four budget as they are ongoing expenditures. But we were prepared to do that when we got them on this ESR grant. Um Virtual Virginia, instructional specialist, there's ESL cost, tutoring, um and summer school program staff. So quite a bit of personnel on this on this particular grant. Contracted services, again, you'll see some continuing themes, Zoom video, IXL, Virtual Virginia, so you can take a look at those. Um there were some translation services for ESL learner families. Materials and supplies, there are instructional supplies, the the same PPE, sanitizing projects. There's some items related to cafeteria tables to accommodate the social distancing, um the carts to accommodate service for in-classroom food consumption, and the refrigeration units. But a lot of that is instructional materials and supplies as well. Internal services, other charges and capital outlay, there was fuel for summer school transportation, indirect costs. There was internet access subsidy subsidy for students as well as hotspots. The roof repair at Dial Elementary School and again, twelve additional schools receiving those replacement washer and dryers. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, I'm going to cover some federal awards that have expired and some of the more smaller ones that we received out of the umbrellas of ARP here in CERESA. Uh Coronavirus Relief Fund was a little over eleven-point-five million dollars. It was one of our first grant awards, expired twelve-thirty, twenty-twenty-one, and was a hundred percent spent within the grant award period. Since it was an early award, the funds were ma- used mainly for COVID-nineteen mitigation items as well as items for remote learning and working, partitions, hand sanitizer, kysers, disinfectant dig, electronic electrostatic sprayers, COVID signage, laptops and iPads, PPE equipment, et cetera. The Post-Secondary Special Education Support Award related to ESR two was for a little over one-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars. It expired June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. This grant was also a hundred percent expended within the grant award period. The funding was used for a special education teacher, three special ed assistants, three bus drivers, three bus driver assistants. Funds were also used for transportation during the twenty-one-twenty-two school year and for the purchase of materials and supplies related to job skills and working experience. The Early Childhood Special Education Teacher Incentive tied to ESR three was for twenty-five thousand dollars. It expired also on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The funding was to reimburse early childhood teachers for coursework that focuses on building and maintaining high-quality early childhood teachers. Nine teachers qualified for this and resulting in sixty percent or fifteen thousand dollars of this award expended within the grant award period.
That's good.
Now to go over some of the Small CARES Act set aside grants, um the total of these set aside grant awards in that box over there is a little over three million dollars, with the largest being the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, also known as the Gear Vision Grant, at two-point-six million dollars. Each of these grants expire nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-two. Currently, the total remaining balance of all these set aside grants is about two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. A hundred-and-eighteen thousand is related to Special Ed Services Support Grant. There is an amendment in process to reallocate funds from personnel and benefits to instructional supplies and then qualifying expenditures will be transferred to spend out this grant. There's a remaining balance of about eighty-seven thousand dollars on the Gear Vision Grant, which will be used to for portable student hotspots and that will also be spent down by the nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-two deadline. The remaining amount of seven thousand dollars relates mainly to private school allocations. Staff is currently working with those private schools to make sure that they have no additional needs and any remaining unspent by the school allocation will be reallocated back to the division via the Virginia Department of Education process and we will expend or encumber those funds by the nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-two deadline. We received a small bus driver incentive gra- grant of a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars that was set to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. This grant was written to provide stipends for school bus driver recruits after the successful completion of the CDL program as well as providing new school bus drivers a sign-on bonus of a thousand dollars to be paid after ninety workdays. There are no expenditures on this grant to date. We will be working in conjunction with transportation to coordinate the expenditure of this funding along with the recent implementation of the bus driver recruitment and retention incentive. The next group of grants expired nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-three, and as you can see them listed, there's the Title VI IDEA Section 611 ARP and the Section 619 ARP. They mirror our Title VI grants that we typically receive every year. The two IDEA ARP grants total approximately three-point-seven million. These are supplemental funding and fall under the same regulations as our Title VI grants. Very little of this group of grants has been spent, but that should change in this coming year. Currently proposed expenditures for the Section 611 ARP are for temporary employment agreements for teacher assistants, materials and supplies, and online content, and for Section 619 ARP, which is our special ed preschool. That's currently proposed expenditures are for professional learning and materials and supplies. The ARP homeless grants are, there's uh two grants approximately four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars. The homeless one grant is used, is to be used for homeless student transportation and professional development. The homeless two grant is to be used for two social workers and homeless student transportation. To date, there are no expenditures on these grants. The next group of grants expired nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four. The first three ARP, Summer Learning, ARP Before and After School, and ARP Unfinished Learning, were filed under one application. These grants total approximately two-point-four million. There have been no funds expended to date. As the name suggests, Summer Learning Funds are to be used to address several areas of high need related to summer learning. Currently, the approved application calls for summer school counselor contracts and twelve-hundred-dollar stipends for teachers in high need areas. There are two sessions slated for English and Math and one session for Economics and Personal Finance. And there's also budgeted funding for fees related to the CHKD Bridge Program. The Before and After School Grant was written to provide one teacher and one counselor at three schools for two and a half hours a day during the instructional school year for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. In addition, these are fun, there are funds available for what is called JASON web-based PBL STEM activities for K through twelve, professional development for teachers, and an after-school excellence network partnership with Johns Hopkins to provide opportunities for advanced learning via an after-school STEM and SEL, a program facilitated by a BBCPS instructor and counselor in collaboration with a team from Johns Hopkins University. There is funding for transportation to the after-school programs and field trips. The ARP Unfinished Learning Grant was written to provide concurrent teacher stipends ranging between two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and two thousand per quarter based on their special education role, number of subject lessons per day, and or number of grade levels taught. There's also funding written to the grant for instructional supplies, phonics booster for reading, and hand-to-mind manipulatives, and Mango Math, small room tips for math. So for a number of years, we've received state funding to support mentoring for first-year teachers with no experience. And for in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we did receive ARP funding in the amount of a little over thirty-nine thousand dollars to support the mentor teacher program. And that will be in coordination with um the grant coordinator and there's been no funds expended as to date or not. The very last grant I'm going to speak to is the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, HVAC Replacement and Improvement Grant. That grant is for a little over thirteen million dollars and expires twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. This grant has a required one-hundred percent match funded from CIP funds. And the grant is written for HVAC renovation or replacement for Kempstville High School, First Colonial High School, Landstown High School, College Mark Elementary, Corporate Landing Middle, Rosemont Forest Elementary, Cook Elementary, Pembroke Elementary, and Trentland Elementary. And to date, we have no funds expended on that grant. Phew, so that is my presentation.
We're starting with Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Hughes.
Um so two people may have to answer this. First of all, are we still experiencing a shortage of teacher substitutes this year? And if so, is it possible to think about continuing the increase in substitute pay as we did last year?
So, I'll answer that briefly, yes. It is possible, to the latter one, yes, it is possible to do that. It's something that we have talked about and are looking at the grants to see where that would go. And then the first part is no, we're not really seeing a shortage of substitutes at this time.
But it's sort of.
Because the board, if you remember, we did go ahead and increase pay. We just didn't go. We had done a temporary increase to a hundred and thirty dollars and we then, in the operating budget, increased it to a hundred and fifteen dollars per day.
I actually have a pretty easy one here. This is pretty comprehensive, thank you. I just wanted to ask you about one of the acronyms. What is letters training?
Letters training is a literacy training that we have. Letters training is a literacy training that several of our teachers have been undergoing for the last couple of years and it stands for Literacy Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. Is that right? So, and currently we have about three-hundred-and-thirty-one teachers that are undergoing that training right now.
It's a great program.
So, just to, yeah, to layer in on that, you probably, the board is probably, are quite a bit about the science of reading and you probably heard a little discussion about that in the General Assembly with the bill that came out around Virginia Literacy Initiative. And letters training is based in the science of reading. And so, really, what that means is that Virginia Beach is well ahead of the expected timeline for implementing science of reading training, which is a twenty-twenty-four start for the literacy initiative at the state level. So, we're way ahead of that, just to give you a sense of where we are and what we're working on.
Anybody else? Ms. Owens?
In the other pandemic relief categories, the ones on probably slide twenty-two, do we have a plan to spend these down within the timeframe? There were several that had no expenditures to date. Like the bus driver one, there was a mention about the ninety-day thing. We haven't had ninety days.
We do, we do. And part of the whole grant management process is working with the different departments that actually have those grants and coordinating with them. And so, part of the grant manager's work and my work and budget staff is actually to work with those folks. The accountants are very heavily involved as well. So, it's kind of a collaboration effort to try to, to work with these. And I mentioned where sometimes you'll tell, uh, transfer expenditures over. Some of that's overlapping, but if we get down, because you're budgeting and so it could be an estimate. And so, if you get to the end and if there's money a little bit, there's always qualifying expenditures and we're always looking at that. I will say, just in my time of year, which is about twenty-five years, we rarely ever don't spend a grant out at all.
Okay, that, that sounds.
Good answer.
Good at spending money that and not giving it back.
Correct.
Anybody else? All right, then, I thank you and your team. So, that concludes our two presentations. And I'll be turning this over now to Vice Chair Melnick to read us into closed session.
I moved that the school board recessed into closed section, session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings. Open Meetings Law, set forth in Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, to deliberate on the following matters. The closed meeting pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 Part A, Paragraphs One and Seven, has amended. One, for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions, higher education. Where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals, namely to discuss, one, contract matters related to the school board attorney's contract, and two, the superintendent's annual goals. A seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss pending litigation and new court decision.
Give me a second. Mrs. Anderson, a second. And all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. Motion approved to go to closed.
Thank you, Madam Clark. We'll take a few moments to transition. Ms. Melnick?
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters law where exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were convened, was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Don't let a motion to approve. Mrs. Anderson, a second. Mrs. Franklin, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass.
Okay. At this time, I move that the School Board accepts the job description and contract amendments in the School Board Attorney's Contract as discussed in closed session. In addition, that we accept the amendment to Goal Two, Number Three, in the Superintendent's Annual Goals.
Second, Mrs. Holtz. All in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion passed.
Actually, I moved.
Oh, that was a motion, okay. So, who was the first?
Doty.
Doty, okay. And a second, Mrs. Holtz.
Can you read what you said again one more time? About my, my goals?
In addition, that we accept the amendment to Goal Two.
You didn't vote the first time. This is, this is your first vote on it.
So, it's not an amendment.
You're just accepting my goals.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Then, all right, okay, let me do that again, okay? I move that the School Board accepts the job description and contract amendments in the School Board Attorney Contract as discussed in closed session. In addition, that we accept the Superintendent's Annual Goals.
Okay, all in favor, show a raised hand, please.
Everybody is a second.
Ten ayes. The motion did pass.
Who was the second? That's what you called for.
Doty was the first and Jessica was the second.
Okay, Jessica was the second. There you go.
Ten ayes.
You said in the second and everybody put their hands up.
All right. We will be back, we will be back here in chambers for formal meeting. This workshop is adjourned.